Mr. Whalen, earlier today, and he's ill, and so I'd ask that we record his absence as excused. Next, we have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to suggest maybe that we put the Carl presentation up above the pay-by-mail item.
Okay. Shall we just make the pay-by-mail item last move, both the resolution and the Carl one up?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any objections? We'll go ahead and do that. Ms. Pat?
That was going to be my suggestion.
Okay. Many staff reports?
No, sir.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
You have a motion, a second, Ms. Pat?
I have a correction on the bottom of page three, the last paragraph. Jim Rose was representing Homestead Corporation, not the housing authority. If that correction could be made.
Okay. Are there any objections to that correction? All right. Any other comments or amendments? If there's none other, all in favor of approving the minutes of the previous meeting as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have public input. First, I have a slip from Helen Katz, 901 North Gregory regarding TIF III funds. Do you wish to address the council, Ms. Katz? Okay. You may address the council. Anybody filling out one of these slips here in the back can bring them forward and give them to me or to the clerk, and they'll have the opportunity to address the council for up to five minutes. Ms. Katz?
Hi, thank you. This will be very short. I'm just kind of learning how all this works. Just as a resident of the neighborhood and as a member of the UCAN Association, I just wanted to encourage the council to look closely at the TIF III funds that are possibly or probably coming in from the hospital as money for the neighborhood. It's our understanding that that's what it was originally intended for, and there's, with all the things that the neighborhood has been wanting to do, especially the community center, but quite a few other things, that just encourage the council to really look close at that and see that that's where the money belongs.
Okay.
And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Katz? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mike Doyle, 411 West Park, regarding the TIF III.
Good evening. My name's Mike Doyle. I live at 411 West Park in Urbana. And before I speak about the TIF III district, I just want to make a couple of acknowledgements. One for the Champaign County Board of Review, which through their work have brought new tax dollars, hopefully, if all goes well, new tax dollars to our community to be used for all kinds of needs that the city of Urbana's residents face. And the second is the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, which is a local nonprofit organization which has, in many ways, led a historic effort to make sure that our hospitals are providing community benefits for the tax exempt status that they get for property taxes and other taxes. Through the work of these two organizations and their leaders, I think tonight we're faced the opportunity to have significant tax dollar increases to meet the needs of Urbana, and I just think it's important to acknowledge their work to make this discussion possible. In thanking them, I guess I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, it's not for sure, but there are the possibility of a million dollars in the current year and possibly millions of dollars in future years from tax dollars from Provena Hospital's property taxes that had previously been marked as tax exempt and not paid to now coming to the taxing bodies in Urbana. As most of you know, Provena is located in a TIF III, which the city council set up in 1990, and for the last several months, the fact that this tax dollars may be coming to the city, to the TIF III district, it's been discussed at UCAN meetings since, I think, back in November when the first ruling was actually announced that Provena would probably have to pay these taxes. Earlier this month, at our April meeting, we voted to urge the council to join with local residents and people in the neighborhood to discuss how these new tax dollars could be spent and should be spent prior to the actual decision in which how they'll be allocated will be made. The general feeling at our meetings and in the neighborhood has been that there remain real needs that have not been met by the use of TIF dollars so far, and that people in the neighborhood would like us to have an opportunity to have some say in how those plans and TIF dollars will be spent. On page 58 of the TIF plan that was approved by the council, let me just read a short couple of sentences. "Once the plan has been adopted and implementation has begun, it is important to monitor the neighborhood. As conditions change, there will be a need to evaluate the impact of the plan and determine a need for new programs and projects. It may be necessary to amend the plan to reflect the changes in these programs or changes in the needs and the desires of the residents." I guess, I know other people have spoken about this in past meetings, and some people have called council members, and the response generally has been, well, you should come up with some plans, and how do you think the money should be spent? And I think people in the neighborhood are ready to engage in a process where we can make some of those decisions and make certain recommendations. But in many ways, there are things laid out in the TIF plan that actually help direct some of those things. On page 28, it identifies the installation of public facilities, including King School expansion, King Park expansion, and the elimination of blighting influences that will benefit substantially all properties and persons within the redevelopment project area. One only has to walk around the neighborhood to know that there are vacant lots, there are boarded-up homes that have gone unrehabbed, largely because we lack the resources and the dollars to do that. UCAN has wanted to redevelop houses. We've rehabbed one home, but have unable to move forward on a second home largely because the city has lacked the resources to support those redevelopment rehabilitation efforts. Things such as, who's going to pay the utility bill during the period when the house is being rehabbed? For an organization like UCAN which has an annual budget of $2,000, $800 in utility bills makes it impossible for us to rehab the houses. The city has said they don't have the money to do it. Before we give a million-plus dollars back to taxing bodies, I think it would be useful for the council to consider how a small amount of that money could be used, could have an impact on the area, and advance the redevelopment goals that are outlined in the plan. The other thing is, on page 54, it says, "A key element of success is housing rehabilitation and new housing," and identifies direct loans, subsidies, property acquisition, construction loans, demolition. One of the things that people in the neighborhood have talked about is how there are a number of housing, nonprofit housing developers, Homestead's one, Habitat for Humanity's another, and all these organizations lack the resources to have a significant impact, and now there may be money to be able to do that. We think, looking at setting up something like a housing trust fund for the area, where there's money that's earmarked, which can be rolled over and reused again and again for the housing needs in that area, makes a lot of sense. When Carl expanded several years ago, the city and Carl both kicked into a neighborhood improvement fund. That was used to help families fix homes for leaking roofs, serious needs, and that's something that could be used with the TIF funds. Many years ago, the city threw community development money, had grants and loans, low-interest loans, that it gave to families to do rehab of their own homes and do the work there. Those funds have been dramatically cut back over the years, if not completely eliminated. I think there's a limited amount available now, but that kind of use could be used in that area for the housing that remains there. So I think those, all kinds of housing programs could be started and could be promoted and help increase the property value that will benefit all the taxing bodies as the value of the homes and the property goes up and taxes increase. But also, there have been two major capital improvements, public capital improvements that have been discussed over and over again for the last five to 10 years and have gone unmet. Both of those are identified in the TIF plan, and to, again, not address those and to turn back the money in the TIF funds to the taxing bodies before we do that, I think would be a mistake. One has been the community center. I think that's been on the table. I've been at meetings, at least for 10 years now, about the community center. Everyone seems to think it's a good idea. Everyone would like to see it happen. No one has money to make that a reality. It seems to me now there is money that's available, and this could make that happen. At least it puts the city in the driver's seat to move the process forward in a way that hasn't been able before. In the past, we've been sort of hoping that people could come up to the table with their own set of funds. And the second one is the King School expansion. We're currently, right now, going to be adding four new classrooms at King School. If people remember, two years ago, it was a major issue of equity and education in our community. The King School lacked the facilities of the other schools in the area. The school board asked for the use of TIF funds to expand King School. The city council at that time was uncomfortable with use of those funds. There seemed to be a limited amount that would be available. Again, now there are new funds in the TIF area, and it seems it's time to revisit the needs of meeting King School's unserved physical capacity needs through the use of TIF funds. And I would like to say, I mean, none of this has to happen just one way or the other. I don't think it's a matter of choosing one particular project over another, but there ought to be some dialogue and some discussion about it. If we want to release some of the funds to the taxing bodies, it can be a targeted release so that those taxing bodies, which I know many on this council criticized our school district for their failure to meet the equity and to be equitable in distribution of their facilities, now's an opportunity, if you want to release those funds, to make sure that the school district uses them in a way that addresses the equity in that area. And so we would, again, at least like to encourage some dialogue, some discussion about how these funds can be used. We think there's many needs in the area, and we think now's a real opportunity to move forward with those things. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Doyle? Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Next, we have Margaret Miller, 501 East High, regarding use of the TIF money. According to her form, she did, would you like to speak, or?
No, just trying to know.
Oh, okay.
Speak up.
Oh, all right. "Please keep TIF money in the north Urbana neighborhood. The help is needed and deserved." And so she chooses not to address the council, but that's her comment. Kathy Cunningham, 801 North Kohler, does not choose to address the committee, but says, "Keep TIF funds from Provena taxes within TIF district to benefit the TIF district and particularly addressing needed improvements at King School." And we have Bob Leach, 910 North Broadway, "Keeping Provena tax dollars in the TIF III district." Mr. Leach?
Mr. Otto Bies, couldn't you understand what I wrote there?
Um, oh, it says, "Speaking for Jerry Moreland, who couldn't make it tonight."
Yeah, I wasn't going to, I was just, for myself, I am supportive of keeping the TIF funds in the TIF III district, but if the council would let me, I'd like to read a statement from Jerry Moreland.
Sure.
Concerning the same issue.
Yeah. I don't, nobody objects to that, do they? Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Jerry Moreland. I reside at 703 North Matthews in Urbana. I apologize for my absence. I am, as we speak, at another meeting at the Urbana School District Equity Committee meeting. Equity defined as freedom from bias or favoritism. Put it, put to action, it means dealing fairly and equally with all concerned. I attended the council meeting on April 19, 2004. I addressed the council in regards to the possible change in property tax exempt status at Provena Medical Center and the opportunities that it presents to the TIF III district by way of capital improvement. Before I go any further, let me say that it is my pleasure and an honor to be a member of the Urbana School District Number 116 Board of Education. I am well aware of the economic situation of the Board of Educat, that the Board of Education is facing. Let it be publicly known that I am not against the Urbana School District Number 116 or the Urbana Park District receiving some of the TIF III funds. What we are asking for is a discussion, hearings, community meetings, and reviewing how effectively we have met the original goals under TIF III and the needs that still exist. At the April 19 meeting, while addressing the council, I was asked what capital improvements I'd like to see happen. I had to chuckle because I should hope that in our conversation that I wasn't the only person wanting capital improvements. Let me give just one example of what can be done. Two years ago, when the overcrowding at King School was a major concern, local residents urged that TIF money be used to help the school district address the inequity of facilities. Although we have been able to secure some state funds for four extra classrooms at King, many of the needs at King School remain. In fact, the need for capital improvement begins the very moment you cross the railroad tracks on North Goodwin Avenue, doesn't stop until you reach Bradley Avenue. There remain many needs in the TIF III district that were detailed in the TIF III manual when it was established in the year 1990. This is the year 2004, and the need for paved streets, sidewalks, the community center, vocational training, new housing, housing rehabilitation, and other needs raised in the TIF III manual still persists. The need for equity in this situation is paramount. Figuratively speaking, Kane should remember his fallen brother. I speak of issues that do affect standards of living, that affect how each and every citizen views themselves, their families, and the pride they place in their community. Once again, I thank you, Jerry Moreland.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Leach? Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Moreland?
Or, well, Mr. Moreland isn't here to answer them, but I guess if anybody has any comments, why?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. There's no other person wishing to provide public input, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinance number 2004-04-047, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, approximately .72 acres on a tract located on the north side of Willow View Road, approximately 200 feet east of Cunningham Avenue. Mr. Rogatz.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Tonight, you're considering annexing, or passing or recommending to the council annexation of the former Dog Club training site, which is approximately .72 acres, which is essentially located at the northwest end of Willow View Road, adjacent to the exit road to I-74 off of Cunningham Avenue North. And the staff has been working with the landowners on this site for some time to come to an annexation agreement. The owners plan to redevelop the site for commercial uses, and the city's zoning designation would be B3 general business. The owners would replace the billboard on the site with a two-sided billboard located to the westerly end of the site itself. A variance from your setback requirements to the northwest portions of the site is being provided in order to allow that positioning of the new sign. Other provisions also provide for the Dog Club site to provide a right-of-way to the north and west, or actually, to provide a subdivision to combine the Dog Club site with purchased right-of-way to the north and west, which was acquired from the IDOT. And also, it provides for the owners to have a 10-foot right-of-way along the north side of Willow View Road, in addition to another 10-foot adjacent right-of-way for sidewalk utility improvements on the south side of the site. And these, of course, are going to be provided for improvements on local street and sidewalks. The other provisions in the agreement give that if there's $150,000 worth of improvements on the site, sanitary sewer will be extended to the site. Some other provisions include that a Class A liquor license would be issued to a legitimate user for that license if they should develop or locate on that site. And we are also going to, as the city, provide for an amendment to the city's enterprise zone on the site. In addition to the ordinance, you have in your packet a location map and the full notice to annex, as well as the previous ordinance to approve execution of an annexation agreement and the annexation agreement itself.
Any questions, Ms. Wyman?
Just curious, because there's a provision for allocation of a Class A liquor license, if you know what plans are being made, or if the owner of the property has plans for putting in any establishment?
I don't know if there's a specific one cited right now, but that would obviously be a good location for that kind of a use. So I think that's what they're looking to have, is that flexibility and assurance to cite such an establishment.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Rogatz? Okay. If there's no other, all in favor, please say, oh, whoops, we need a motion. Ms. Wyman?
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have ordinance number 2004-04-048, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Artese Crossing at Behringer Circle, Weatherford Drive at Behringer Circle, Mark Trail at Philo Road, Green Ridge Drive at Michigan Avenue.
What is before you is some recent traffic commission discussions. These are streets, intersections, that are fairly new in the respective subdivisions where roads have been recently constructed, and we have local streets intersecting with collector classified streets. And the recommendation is various stop signs, one-way stops at C intersections or two-way stops at the subdivisions within Behringer Commons and South Ridge and the Scottswood Fourth subdivisions. So if there's any questions, be happy to.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gray? If there's no question or comments, a motion would be in order. Ms. Pat?
Point of personal privilege.
Sure.
If someone who knows how to control the temperature in this room could make it a little warmer, if that's at all possible. Quite a few of us on this end are cold.
Working on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wyman?
Move to send these, this ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Let me see here. Next, we have the presentation by Carl Hospital regarding their construction activities.
Good evening.
My name's Lynn Barnes, and I'm Vice President of Clinical Operations at Carl Foundation Hospital. And I have with me Von Lambert. He's Director of Facilities. And tonight, Mr. Gray asked us to give a presentation about our building project that will be taking off very soon, and we wanted to give you an update about that. We put, I believe, a copy of our presentation in your packets, so if you would want to pull that out. And then we have copies for those who are in the audience. Bill, if you would hand those out, please. And if anybody else needs a copy, Bill's got them. As you probably have been aware, in the News Gazette, there have been some articles about our impending building project. If you look at the second sheet of the packet, the total project is $48.7 million. It's a project that actually started in just this December with the ED renovation, and it will be done, we hope, in December of 2006. So it's a lengthy project, but it's a large project. McCarthy out of St. Louis are the construction management group. HDR is the architect firm, and they're out of Omaha, Nebraska. And GHR are the engineering firm, is the engineering firm that's working with us, and they're a local firm in Champaign. There are two phases of the project, the emergency department renovation and expansion. And as I mentioned, it started December, and it is well on its way, and it will be done in about, we hope, by January of '05. So that project is a little over a year project, and you think, well, why does it take so long to renovate an ED? And that's because we're having to do it in four phases, so obviously, we don't close the doors. So we're doing it just kind of bit by bit by bit, but it's going very smoothly, and we're pleased at the progress. But really, the large hunk of this project is adding on five floors to our north tower. And we're also building a little building that we're calling the West Ancillary, which is a two-story building with a basement that will be nestled in where the Manor Care parking lot currently is, which is just east of Manor Care, behind Manor Care. So it's in between our north tower and the Manor Care nursing home. And we've been working very closely with Manor Care on this. Manor Care is actually owned, the building and the property is owned by Carl Foundation. However, Manor Care has a lease on that building, and has since like the 1960s, and the lease goes on till 2022. So we have a good relationship with Manor Care, and they've been very cooperative with us in working out this detail because clearly, it infringes on them because we're getting very close to the building. And so, but we have made accommodations for their parking, and it's already done right across the street. So visitors and staff and others will have plenty of room for parking, even though we've infringed on their, on their current parking lot. If you'll flip the page, you'll see the emergency department renovation and expansion. It will give us 11 additional exam rooms, which if you've used our emergency department, you know that are sorely needed. We currently sometimes have to have patients in the hallways and have people wait much longer than we desire to have them wait. It'll be a refreshed appearance. We'll be, you know, putting all new finishings in the whole area. We're adding a second nurses station. So instead of having all the doctors and nurses at one end of the ED, kind of hovered around a small area, we're going to be splitting them up and having two teams of nurses and physicians working both ends of the ED, which will be more efficient from a care perspective and as it relates to our patients. We'll have increased privacy. Right now, we use a lot of curtains in between patients, and many of these exam rooms will be private, which will be a huge plus. So we're looking forward to improved patient flow. Instead of having a waiting room, no more waiting room. We're going to have a big, large, kind of a lobby area in the ED, and so patients and families who are waiting will be very connected to the triage staff. You know, so there won't be, you won't be put behind a door and close a door, waiting. You'll be right there, right next to the triage nurse, so the people will feel more connected, because sometimes you worry that you're forgotten when you're put in the waiting room. And then we've moved our occupational medicine department to a modular unit. We prefer to call them modular units instead of trailers, but they're basically, you know, a series of trailer units that are put together, and we have that in our emergency department, what used to be our emergency department parking lot. And that has allowed us to still house OCH Med while we're making these renovations, but our goal is to move OCH Med back into the first floor of our complex once we get some of this construction behind us and on its way. So that's going well. The next picture, I just put a picture in here just to show you the design of one of our pediatric exam rooms. So instead of having just all exam rooms, we've got some specialty exam rooms in our new ED, and one of them is for kids, or at least I think a couple of them will be designated for children, which will be a better and certainly an enhancement for our emergency department. The next picture I put in here is a picture of our current north tower as it stands and sits right now, just to give you a little bit of perspective. You can see that the street on this photo is, this is the street that's just north of the north tower, and that's Church Street. So as the Loop Road comes around, then there's Church Street. And our guest house just sits to the, in the right corner of, you know, if the picture was this big, you'd see the guest house over here on the right corner. Are you with me on kind of the perspective? Good.
Guest house would be kind of behind us.
Pardon?
Behind and off to the right.
Yes, exactly. Right. Kind of off to your right shoulder there. The next picture is, it's enhanced photo, just showing you what the new building would look like. And we're thinking that this would be the tallest building in Urbana, at 178 feet, I think. Pretty darn close. So we're thinking it's taller than Florida Avenue Residence Hall, which is the, I think, the current tallest building. So, I don't know, I was kind of excited about that. I live in Urbana, so. Anyway, so we're adding five floors. And we also show, if you see this kind of building that's just north of the north tower, that is a possible addition of a north OR. We have not made a financial decision on this yet. We have a need to add some ORs, but this is just a possibility, but I just show it here so you would know that we might add that. And then the West Ancillary building rises up just behind that higher portion, that's the West Ancillary building that's actually sitting in the Manor Care parking lot. So again, just a perspective. On this unit, I mean, in this addition, we're adding a medical surgical unit. That'll be Level 7. So right now, north tower is six levels, so Level 7 will be a new med surg unit. And again, we are replacing beds. Our Rogers building was built in 1966, and we have a need to replace those rooms. The rooms are small, they do not have showers in them, they only have toilets in them, and they're very teeny, and they're pretty much only used now for privates because they're just so small, it's hard to fit into beds, and with the equipment and technology that is now required to care for patients. So we'll be moving beds off of Rogers, putting them on this new floor. We're hoping, depending on our census, but we're hoping that we can keep many of those as private rooms, and they'll be larger even than our double rooms now in the Rogers building. The rooms include showers, it'll help improve our staffing efficiencies because of the way it's configured, and it'll be consecutive stacking of all of our medical and surgical beds in one tower. So right now, we're, we have some med surg beds in Rogers and some med surg beds in our other north tower, and this way, the physicians that work with those patients will all be in one tower. So that'll be a positive. The next level is a pediatric level. Again, we're replacing beds from our Rogers building, just 17 beds per 17 beds. They'll all be private rooms, though. We're also adding two isolation rooms and protective environments, and we're adding those because we have Dr. Mark Musselman, who is a pediatric hematologist oncologist, and he treats children who have cancers. And so our goal is to have enough isolation rooms to care for those children and allow to provide them with chemotherapy so they do not have to go to St. Louis. Right now, many of those kids and families have to go to Uh, right now, many of those kids and families have to go to Saint Louis, uh, depending on how many kids we have in our current isolation rooms. Um, so that'll be a plus, because we'll have then a total of six, uh, protection environment rooms. And we'll have improved support space. We'll actually have an educational room, uh, as well as additional family support space for our Peds, uh, unit. The next floor, level nine, is going to be the NICU relocation, our neonatal intensive care unit. Uh, I don't know if you've ever been up on our fourth floor right now in our older buildings, the NICU unit. Uh, at any given time, we have twenty-two to twenty-five little teeny babies up there in the isollets. And right now, the isollets are very close to one another, and families have very little privacy, uh, with their child. And in our new design, there'll be pinwheels, and there'll be three isollets to a large pinwheel, which will allow some expanse of space around each isolate, uh, so that families will be able to, uh, have a little more private time, uh, with their baby. So, that'll be an improvement. So, we're getting some major additional space for NICU in this renovation. Uh, it's tripling, actually, which is a, a significant improvement. Um, on levels ten and levels eleven will be our new OB area, um, and labor and delivery. Um, we will also have an elevator that will go from eight, nine, ten, and eleven, so that we have kind of a Peds mom hospital on top of the hospital. Um, so that if a baby's in NICU, or if a baby's in labor and delivery and needs to quickly get to an isolate in NICU, there's a, a special elevator just for that. Um, so that'll help in terms of, you know, transportation of, um, immediate needs between the OB floors and the Peds floor, and then, uh, Peds intensive care and NICU. Um, so we're looking forward to improved OB. Um, I tease people and tell them if they're going to have a baby, just wait a couple of years, you know, and we'll have a really nice area for you. Our current OB facilities are in our Rogers building, which is our oldest building. And while we do have private rooms, because we've turned those into privates, not doubles, it's, they still aren't ideal, because we don't have showers in there, and obviously, a lot of amenities that, uh, parents would like, uh, when they have babies. Um, and then the, uh, other piece of our, um, activity is the West Ancillary building. And what we're doing with that is that we are shelling out levels zero and one. Uh, it'll be, for now, just storage space, just trying to think of the future. But we needed to put them zero and one level to get to the second level, which is where we really need, have the need, which is for surgery support space. So, we're adding prep recovery beds. So, the beds that you go to, you know, before you have surgery and get all prepped and, and you get a little sleepy. And then after surgery, when you're in recovery, uh, we need more of those beds. Uh, we have a clog, uh, in our OR, because we don't have enough beds to be able to accommodate the number of surgeries that are being done. And so, we need to expand the beds, so that we can move our patients through that process more smoothly and more timely. So, that is, uh, pretty much the, um, the project that we'll be embarking on. Um, actually, May third, we have a, a tower crane that'll be coming in, um, and it's, uh, coming on ten semis. And, uh, I know, isn't that something? And, uh, it will be establishing that tower crane on the east side of our north tower, very close to it. Um, and of course, we're working closely with our engineering, our security department to, we've, we've built a new sidewalk, so that we've rerouted pedestrians and, you know, we're trying to do everything opposite that we, uh, can and should to make sure that our, our staff and our, uh, families and people who visit our facility are safe, you know, with this construction going on. Because it's a pretty tight area to do this, you know, so there, it's a lot to control and a lot to manage. We do, we don't have a lot of space on that footprint to be able to put, um, you know, semis and all the things that kind of go along with construction.
Are there any questions for Ms. Barnes? Mr. Hayes?
I have two quick questions. The first one, uh, previously, you're going to re- relocate this building in another area?
Uh, we had some original plans about a year and a half to two years ago.
Yeah.
Two years ago, where we were actually going to put, uh, put a two-story building, this West Ancillary building, in the middle where our shuttle drive is. Yes, we considered that as an option, but we did not move forward that option, because we weren't getting enough bang for our buck, uh, because we had such limited space.
Some other question is, a couple of years ago, you know, Dr. Musselman, is that his name?
Mark Musselman.
Yeah, he was campaigning and, and to stir up a lot of publicity in, in favor of having a facility here like the, uh, Ronald McDonald Hospitals, uh, down in Tennessee and a couple of other places. And so, my question is, is he going to be here on a regular basis, or is he going to be shuffling all around the country?
Um, Mark Musselman is a full-time, uh, physician at Carl Hospital.
Okay.
And, and has been, and we expect and obviously want him to stay, so I, I don't know.
I know one time he was, you know, going all over the country, I guess, trying to bring in the best ideas on how to deal with, uh, children with, you know, cancer.
Right, well, he's, he's a very strong advocate, you know, for services for children. And, in fact, the guesthouse, though it isn't a Ronald McDonald House, but our new guesthouse has helped to accommodate some of the families that, um, are parents of his kids.
Of course. Ms. Wyman?
Um, is, uh, is the clinic also going to, going to be using the hospital, or, I mean, the, the expansion? Or is it just for, uh?
Just for Carl Foundation Hospital.
Just for the hospital, let's see.
That's part, yeah, I know.
Okay. Um, and I presume you've spoken with the neighbors?
Um, yes. In fact, um, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we had a community meeting about a week and a half ago. And then we also have a, a letter going out to folks, and, and we've been having community meetings over the past several years, twice a year, uh, at a minimum, and, uh, send out notices about what's on the agenda. And then, uh, we have various, um, numbers in attendance. I mean, it's usually a handful of people, not a lot of people. But, um, we always put on the agenda what we'll be discussing, and we've actually been giving them a scoop on this for probably the past year and a half to two years. Um, and we have a letter going out in the next week or so, giving them a heads up, just to, oop, you know, there's going to be some noise, you know, kind of letting them know.
Okay. And, um, and have you received any feedback regarding hours of construction or impact to the neighborhood, anything like that?
Um, we provided a lot of information to those in attendance and, and haven't received any negative feedback or any, um, questions that we could not answer in a way that was, uh, supported by the, those who asked them.
And if, um, people were interested in knowing about the scheduling or questions, that sort of thing, can they, is there something like on your website that would direct them to where to go? Uh, or a phone number, direct phone number to contact?
In the letter that we send out, there'll be probably Von's name and phone number, uh, for them to contact with any questions or concerns. And Gretchen Robbins, who is our public relations person, is very connected, uh, with the community members. And I know they feel very comfortable in calling her, too, with any concerns, but we'll make, in the letter, it will be in there. And on our website, we haven't talked about that, but that's certainly something we could also do.
Okay. And I think just one last question. Um, for the expansion, I presume, did you have to get a certificate of need from Department of?
Yes.
Health? And, and you received that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's from the State Department of Public Health?
Illinois Health Facilities Planning Board.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, questions or comments? If there's none, we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I think, Bill, you have a?
Oh.
Yeah, I'd just like to, to, uh, talk about one aspect of this project that's important, piece to the project, and about, you have the big picture of what's to be constructed. Um, sometimes you say the devil's in the details, and, and one of the details is, um, space needs for a contractor to do a project of this size. You, you need, you know, many trailers, you have building materials that come in, steel, concrete trucks, all kinds of deliveries and such, and lay-down areas are necessary. And, and Von and his staff and, and we have met on a few occasions now to discuss where these locations can best be fit into this project. And our collective wisdom is what's before you this evening. Now, there is some, uh, impact to the motoring public to use Church Street, but what would work best for this project is to close Church between Kohler and Orchard. Um, and then we're talking a project that's going to last, the schedule is two and a half years. I say it could be maybe as much as three years, but we think it's more in the two and a half years what is programmed. So, I want to alert you that I emphasize it's temporary, but that's a long time, uh, for closure for this one block. Now, people, uh, certainly can reroute themselves if they have to go east and western Church Street, um, you know, up Orchard and, and across on Fairview. But, for the most part, I think, when you look at where people live or where they have to go to, whether it's to a parking deck to pick up, drop off, what have you, there's certainly ways to use, you know, McCullough and, uh, Kohler and, and the streets around there where, I don't think this is going to be that big of a inconvenience, but it'll be some inconvenience certainly to those who live, you know, in the median area. But in any event, um, this would work well for the contractor to, to do the work, um, to provide, uh, something that's very accessible immediately adjacent to the site. There will be this large crane that was described, and a lot of times, when you're picking up the materials, steel and, and et cetera, uh, you're going to need trucks that are literally be on Church Street anyway, so there'll be lane closures even if the street wasn't closed, um, just because of the close proximity of this project. Um, the city will receive with this, uh, full closure of Church Street, um, certainly some benefits. Carl is, um, willing to look at the one-block reconstruction of that street, of Church Street. And also, which is a desire of the cities, if this wasn't happening, we need to, uh, address the condition of that street anyway. And then Orchard is not in very good condition either, we, north of Church. And they would make a cash contribution, and we would work out the details to repair that street in two thousand and seven. And last but not least, um, Carl's identified indeed, we see support, and the Park District is supportive of an additional north-south sidewalk along the east side of, uh, Orchard Street, which would connect the fairgrounds, the parking lot area. Uh, it'd be an uninterruptible sidewalk versus the driveways and such on the west side, but it'll be a nice sidewalk that will parallel, uh, Orchard by the, uh, Crystal Lake Park down to Church and to the Forum and to the hospital, et cetera. So, um, I think Carl is, uh, you know, i- is very, uh, much recognizing that, um, this is going to help them, but at the same time, they're helping the city and the citizens by these street improvements and sidewalk improvements, um, in return for the closure for the street. So, um, we put together a resolution that kind of outlines and the wherewithal is what's going on. Um, but the city, uh, code of ordinances allows the Public Works Director of Street Closure is only up to six months, or which is kind of like one construction season. This is like three construction seasons. So, to you, and the council has to grant that authority.
Ms. Pat?
I have a question about Orchard Street. Of, of the things that are listed here that, um, that Carl will do, one of them is item D to otherwise repair any other property, public or private, that's been damaged by the activities. And I'm wondering, going to item B about contributing forty thousand dollars toward the reconstruction of Orchard Street, is it anticipated that this construction project is going to result in damage to Orchard Street? Or is, is this money going just toward improvements that we had previously identified as needed on that street?
Orchard Street today really needs to be addressed. Certainly with, you know, heavy construction equipment, there may be some additional, you know, damage or cracking or what have you. But if you would drive it today or walk it, um, you would see that it's, it's in need of repair, um, especially the north half of the street. So, the forty thousand dollars is basically half the cost to really rebuild that street. And it's a long block, uh, one very long block. It's actually kind of like three short blocks, if you will.
Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Hayes?
You know, when you look at, uh, Church Street, the part that's going to be closed, closed off, right? The one house sitting on the corner, uh, it faces the other direction, and, and the guesthouse, there's no driveway entrances into the guesthouse. So, my question is, with all this, uh, you know, construction equipment, you sure that's the only block that's going to be, uh, closed? I mean, you make, make it sound like it's going to be, uh, a whole lot of, uh, like the, uh, the crane and all this construction equipment and, and, uh, concrete trucks. Seems like my, it's not going to take up more than one, one block?
Well, i- it's going to be a very hectic one block between Kohler and Orchard. But again, the crane is off-site. It's immediately east of the existing north tower there. Um, but, uh, you raised a point about the guesthouse, and the, the point with the guesthouse is the way the driveway is oriented, and you do need to enter the guesthouse off Church Street. What's going to happen is, for this period of time, the parking will be restripped and reoriented, and literally, you'll have to enter the guesthouse parking off of Orchard Street, and you'll exit off straight east-west, you can go west to Kohler Street. So, there would be a temporary driveway connection between the house immediately west of the guesthouse to use that driveway to exit onto, uh, Kohler Street. So, it'd be kind of a one-way westbound situation. Uh, does that help me answer your question? But, but pretty much the activities will be confined between Orchard and Kohler. And it will use that whole right-of-way. So, the streetlight poles will be removed. They'll have other temporary night lighting installed. And, and as I understand it, the overhead, uh, utility lines on the south side will be relocated underground as at Carl expense now, even though it's in the right-of-way. Um, and that's an amenity aesthetic, uh, improvement. So, those overhead lines will be going underground. When it's done, it'll be a cleaner-looking, uh, site.
Ms. Wyman?
I have another question I forgot to ask earlier, and that deals with, uh, with the expansion. It, it makes sense, there's probably going to be more employees at Carl, uh, Hospital. And I'm wondering if there are any anticipation, or any plans anticipated to accommodate increased, um, the increased number of parking spaces that are needed, since it seems like, um, on Grid Street and Main Street, south of Carl Hospital, already a lot of the Carl employees park or use those streets as parking lots for, um, for their shifts. I'm wondering if there's any plans to accommodate the increased need for parking?
Well, actually, uh, because we're replacing beds, um, we don't, we won't be adding as many employees as you would think, you know, because we're actually vacating space in an old building and moving it. So, those employees would work in those units, would simply move to the new units. Now, certainly, there might, there would be some incremental housekeeping staff, maintenance staff, you know, so certainly, um, a few added employees related to this construction. But in regard to the parking, uh, we are actually doing a, a parking study right now, uh, because we agree that we've got to address parking needs on our campus. And, uh, we've engaged a, a firm to help us take a look at that, look at what our opportunities are. Uh, we do have a south garage that we can add four floors to, um, so that's an option. Uh, we also can, um, add to the, uh, north garage that is off of Orchard on the backside. You know, that's in our MIC, and we could tear down those houses there that we actually use for some other functions. Uh, but we could do that. And, uh, we just got to study that, because we, we do, we agree with you that we've got some potential parking issues coming up in the future, so we're coming up with a plan.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Well, just a comment, I think, um, you know, this, the construction plans pretty much, uh, embody what we had envisioned a few years ago when we passed the Carl Master Site Plan, when we asked them, "Don't build out, but build up." And, uh, this is certainly a prime example of building up, adding, uh, five floors to this building. And, uh, when we asked them to build up, obviously, there are some, uh, you know, temporary downsides with the dust and, and construction. And I think it's a very reasonable request to close, uh, the street, even though it is for an extended period of time while this construction goes on. So, I think it's going to be really exciting to see it go up, and, uh, you know, wish you the best of luck with the construction.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Just a point of information, speaking of parking lots, and maybe you have driven by and wondered what was going on at the northeast corner of Orchard and University, and that is a surface parking lot to accommodate, as I understand, largely, uh, accessible parking, uh?
We're planning some ADA spots there, as well as employee recognition spots. So, if like for employees who do like great customer service stuff, they get to park there for a month and walk right across the street. Yeah, so, yeah, good point. And, you know, the other thing, um, uh, we would point out is that we are, uh, concerned about, like, we don't want construction workers parking on the street. So, we are developing a gravel lot. We're working closely with the city on that, on some property that we have, um, to accommodate our construction workers, because that's important to us, to keep them off the street. Um, we think that would be a dissatisfier to have these, you know, construction guys parking in the neighborhood. So, we're going to put them all together, um, and, uh, we're making a lot for about one hundred or so, because we anticipate that at any given time, when this project is in full steam ahead, that there could be one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five, uh, men and women working.
Ms. Chenoweth.
I'd like to move approval, or move Resolution Number 2004-011-R to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth.
I just wanted to applaud Carl Hospital for building up instead of out and selecting a site within the MIC, and I think you have a lot of space to grow, even after an expansion like this. I'm also really pleased to see the agreement to construct a sidewalk on the east side of Orchard. I think that that's been needed for a while. I watch people walk on the grass all the time on that side of the park, and I just think it would be a nice amenity. I am also pleased to see some of the economic, the private economic development that's been happening in the area around Carl Hospital, and I think any expansion of services means that there's also stimulus for some of the commercial activity, even though this of itself is an expansion of the nonprofit portion of the hospital, the new retail in that area is certainly welcome. One comment I would make, which is just that in looking at, we do have a noise ordinance, it covers construction, and one thing that you may want to look at, because I know there seems to be standard practice in town that construction companies oftentimes start about a half an hour before the noise ordinance actually allows them to start, and so given the proximity to a neighborhood, you may want to have a little, some oversight in terms of making sure that the construction company is aware of our noise ordinance, is aware of those times, and really doesn't start operating heavy machinery, jackhammers, et cetera, before that time period. But that's, otherwise, I think, you know, it looks very promising, the proposal.
Thank you.
Ms. Wyman.
I wanna echo those comments. I think it's, you should be applauded for building up rather than out. I just also wanna point out that it's not lost on me and probably other council members that at the previous meeting, the township meeting, no one from Carl did show up to address the needs of the township in the healthcare needs of our general assistance clients. And if you could refer that information and concerns back to whoever it is over at Carl who can address those needs, the city supports the, what's obviously a needed increase for medical care, which you all are addressing in your expansion of Carl Hospital. But it's also important in recognizing the benefit that Carl's receiving from not having to pay property taxes and the rest of the citizens and taxpayers of Urbana making up for that absence. And some sort of recognition should be made by the hospital in allowing general assistance clients from the township to qualify for charity care programs.
I do not disagree with you. Kind of came in on that conversation. I followed up with Carol Elliott, her username, and as she sort of mentioned, she has been in conversation for the last couple weeks or so with Rob Tonkinson. And so there, we're very on, we're very much on that same page, and have already talked about how there certainly are clients that you guys have served that would also qualify for our charity care program. So I think we're on the same page there, and I've already sent Rob Tonkinson an email as I was sitting there, just giving him an update that I talked with Carol Elliott, and she had called him today as a follow-up to another call that he made to her. So I think we're in tune, and I, I'm not sure, I'm not, I mean, I think if we, I'm not sure why we weren't here tonight, but it wasn't anything that we're not attentive to the need or engaged.
So if, yeah, as the city of Urbana certainly supports Carl Hospital's expansion upward and forward into meeting the needs of our community and community, the surrounding communities, I'm happy to hear that you believe Carl is, the hospital is, will include general assistance clients from our, from the township in meeting those medical needs throughout our community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I would just add to Ms. Huth's comment, I'm glad to see that you all are engaged in addressing the, some of the challenges we're facing with the general assistance medical bills. And that's certainly very responsive to send an email while you're sitting here listening to us, and it's something that we notice and really appreciate. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have ordinance number 2004-03-026, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances regarding maximum fines and pay-by-mail minimum fines. I think I wish to start it off, we have Mr. Waller here. Do you have any updates for us, Mr. Waller? Since the last meeting?
Steve provided the memo.
Okay. Well, Mr. Holt's provided us with a very good memo, I guess. We'll go ahead and open the floor to motions and discussions. Ms. Chenoweth.
I did wanna tell committee members, since we didn't receive these in our packets, I went ahead and made copies, and I actually didn't even see it on my desk until Ms. Huth showed it to me, that I went ahead and made copies of what I had sent out by email to those who are on email. I sent out this, I think, Thursday, an alternate proposal, and so I, in some ways, what we have is kind of, what I, what isn't in my proposal is the actual language of the ordinance. In some ways, what I thought is that if we, instead of writing everything out twice, depending on what comes out today, we can write up an ordinance to, that says what we determine today, and can, go ahead and consider that in our next meeting. I would, I guess, I'd like to make a motion to move the, what is before you as an alternate proposal with the recommendation for approval to council next week.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth.
I wanna explain, because it is a little unusual, what, since we were looking at the entire fine structure, it was difficult just to, I mean, originally, it seemed like this came out of issues with noise and potentially car noise, as well as general noise. It kind of expanded into a whole look at our entire fine structure. And so I took a comprehensive look at our entire fine structure, since that seemed to be the invitation. And one thing I want to say is I used the levels that Mr. Holt's had put forward. I did add a level of $25, because there were some really minor offenses in here that were kind of being treated on the same level as major offenses. And generally speaking, I think, looking at our fine structure, I'm kind of, I was kind of appalled at the extent to which we just kind of have blanket fines for things of really very different levels of severity, and I know council members had discussed this at our last meeting, that they had also had seen that. And so in doing it, I really think this is a subjective issue, and it has to do with the severity of the concerns, and I heard what council members had said in our last meeting, and tried to incorporate those ideas in as much as possible. And so trying to make the fine structure more fit the crime, that's what, that's what you have before you in terms of my proposal. Just I'd make one comment, which is, I tried to make all license-related fines the same. I do think that our license-related fines were far too low, except for the liquor license, which I think is kind of a step above in terms of the severity of operating without a license. So I guess I would take any questions before you. I did have one correction to what is in front of you. On page two, Mr. Holt's had said in his, in his memo that open burning was a typo. So I would like to correct that and say, under Chapter 11, Health and Sanitation, to bring back open burning, I had struck it, because I was copying from Mr. Holt's memo, original memo, and put the fine at $135, which is also what he has proposed. So that would be an increase from $50 to $135.
I'll yield the floor.
Okay. Ms. Pam.
Thank you. First, I have a question for Ms. Chenoweth. Just to be clear, I understand the motion, which I seconded. Your motion is to adopt this schedule of fines and to request that the staff write the appropriate ordinance for this, for the next, for the city council meetings.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I have a couple of questions for Mr. Waller. One thing I was curious about when looking at this list, on some of the crimes that I think of more as the types of things that police arrest people for, and that are actually kind of serious crimes, I'm wondering, for example, let's say, battery or breaking and entering, what determines whether, or under what circumstances would that be a city offense pay by mail, rather than charges a state offense and handled differently?
Well, perhaps Eddie could join me in this, but it's my understanding that this is a judgment call by the police officer, judging on the total circumstances how severe it is. And perhaps considering the background of the person that's charged, is there a known repeat violator, for example, and perhaps their age? I defer Eddie about the matter.
I would agree with that, and it just gives us another option. Often, in what would, in a questionable battery situation, the state's attorney's office is not gonna prosecute it anyway. This gives us another venue, and it also decriminalizes it by going to city processes. It's a civil offense, as opposed to a crime.
So if someone, for example, if someone didn't break into someone's home, rip off their door and try to steal things, or maybe hurt a person, that's the type of thing the state's attorney would prosecute?
Absolutely.
If someone, though, did do something that was more than trespass, but you felt probably wasn't serious enough that the state's attorney would end up prosecuting it, but this person broke into someone's home, you might give them a city ticket?
Yes.
That's the idea? Okay.
Create a consequence steal for them.
Thank you. And just one more question for Mr. Waller. Is, who determines whether, whether a fine is paid by mail as opposed, for, I'm thinking of something that, I should maybe should pick a different one, like, where's one? Like smoking on buses. If a person were smoking on a bus, would the police officer would write a ticket and that would be paid by mail? Or is, I guess, like, I'm trying to figure out this question. Does the police officer make a determination at the time of writing the ticket whether it's a pay-by-mail, or is that a determination that can be made by your office?
Well, initially, it's made by the council. The council selects which offenses are even eligible to be paid by mail. Some are just not.
And that's what we're doing here.
Correct. But there is some element of discretion for police officer. He can check on the notice to appear, that even though you could pay it by mail, in this case, court appearance is required. And again, I imagine that's for purposes, depending on age of the offender, and repeat offender, and things like that.
Once the police officer makes that determination, can the, does the city legal department have any discretion to make that, to change, I mean, I assume, if, well, yeah, I guess actually either way, but more I was thinking about, if the police officer checked it as a pay-by-mail, would then would the legal department have the authority to not accept it by mail and to require it to go to hearing?
It really hasn't come up, but Eddie, I would take the position that we rule. Sorry, but we, I feel the legal division would have the opportunity to say, they may have checked, paid by mail, but we know something we want to go to court, or vice versa.
And vice versa is actually what's more likely to happen, where someone did not, where someone's supposed to have to go to court, but city legal department would make a determination to just allow them to pay the fine.
As I say, I'm not aware that it's come up, but I would take the position that we're over Eddie on that.
But you've been here a long time, so does that, does that come up on any kind of offenses at all, where the city legal department takes a different position than what was originally written on the ticket?
I frankly can't think of one.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
I think in the past, in the past, there have been situations where an individual would get a ticket from the city, and they would go to legal, and I think in those particular cases, legal just wanted the situation straightened out. That happens sometimes, right?
Once in a while, we see a greater value toward not taking it to court and having, shall we say, a legal office adjustment.
Yeah.
Once in a while, but it takes some unusual circumstance to point us in that direction that something would be more useful than a fine.
Okay. I got a question about bicycles. Is it illegal to ride a bicycle on the sidewalk?
I think so. My codebook's right here, but it's my recollection.
I think it's determined by the age of the person.
What I'm also getting at is, we have here unlawful riding. And so you have a lot of, a lot of, you know, young people, got people riding on the back fender, across the handlebars, and that's unlawful. No, I'm just wondering how you deal with that? And, you know, you talk about age and a few other things. How do you deal with unlawful riding on a bicycle?
I don't know right off the bat at all, for me. But if it's written as you say, then certainly we can take enforcement action. I stress to the men and women in the department, though, that we want compliance, and if we can get a young person to comply and ride the bicycle safely, then a ticket wouldn't be needed.
Okay.
We use that as an opportunity to give them a lecture on bicycle safety, recognizing that the fallback position is, we can take enforcement action if needed, but most youngsters are totally ignorant of any laws applicable to bicycle riding.
That's all right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor.
Several, especially, oh, maybe, Jack, you can help me out on some of these, Chapter 4, Animals and File Prohibited at Large, Responsibility of Owner. Would this be the, like, a first offense, say if it was the dog, for instance, running at large and bit somebody, would, is this the, what they would be cited for?
Well, certainly 4-1, I believe, is the dog running at large, and if they bit someone, then that'd also bring them under a vicious dog ordinance, and I don't believe that could be settled by mail at all.
Okay, so then the vicious dog ordinance is something that is a notice to appear?
Well, it's not eligible for pay-by-mail at all.
Right, all right. So this would be for dogs, for instance, running at large, where they do not inflict any kind of injury to a person. Is that right?
Well, if they did, there'd be an additional charge of vicious dog, running at large and vicious dog charge. Now, I'm sorry, I don't know if this were a second or third offense. My dim recollection is that the, male only for the first offense on dog running at large, don't forget it's, the offense has got to occur within four or six-month period, so the other one keeps dropping off.
Right.
Don't confess, I don't know for sure if this could apply to a second offense.
Yeah. Well, even though this doesn't apply to vicious dogs, sometimes dogs running at large can be a real nuisance. You know, I've had them out there in my yard doing destruction of one kind or another, and they're virtually impossible to identify, or capture and identify. And so I would ask that the council take a look at a very modest fine of $75 for having a dog running at large. Another, and I'm sure the library staff might have some comment on the loitering. Another, and I'm sure the library staff might have some comment on the loitering fine at the library being reduced from $75 to $25. I know that sometimes in the library, loitering is a significant problem and not just an occasional nuisance. And so I would like to see some feedback from Mr. Schliff and his staff on that. I think they may be concerned about the loitering fine, the library being reduced. Recall in Champaign, although they've had a certainly much more significant problem than we have, they've actually hired security guards to help curb the loitering problem over in the Champaign library. Couple of them under miscellaneous offenses and provisions seem to me that they deserve to have some consideration in raising the fine 15-3, the hindering of performance by or refusing to obey direction of a city officer or employee. The times where I've seen this come into effect are usually in emergency response situations at the scene of an accident or scene of a crime where a citizen is trying to insert themselves into the emergency response in one way or another and refusing the officers, generally the officers' direction to stay clear of the scene so that the emergency personnel can do their job. And that cases that I've heard of, it can be a real danger in not only having an unqualified person trying to insert themselves into a, an emergency scene, but then taking up the professional time of an officer to deal with them rather than dealing with the emergency at hand. And so I would suggest that that fine is worthy of being raised rather than being left at $75. Further down, under chapter 15, disorderly conduct and mob action, I believe are probably serious enough to be raised rather than be kept at a $75 minimum. Those are crimes where there can be a victim, very easily be a victim of violence as a result of those crimes, and those should be raised. I also believe the, some of the alcohol fines should be raised. You know my feelings on that and feelings of people in the neighborhood who have commented both on email and here at the council chambers. And so I would ask that on some of those alcohol-related fines, that they be risen. Most of these in this proposal remain at the $75 level.
Ms. Pat, or is the mayor finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Pat.
I know I'm, it sounds like I'm repeating my question, but I'm still trying to get a handle on, I'm just seeing when it's paid by mail and when something more would happen. I agree with the mayor about the ones he mentioned in section 15, hindering the performance by refusing to obey direction of a city officer or employee. If someone interferes with the police in conducting their duty, don't they arrest them?
Yes.
That wouldn't, I'm trying to think, I mean, circumstance where someone would get a pay by mail ticket for refusing to obey the direction of a city officer, would that, would that ever come up that they get a ticket if they were interfering with the police or a firefighter at an emergency situation?
Conceivably could, but in most instances, interfering with a police officer results in a physical arrest.
That's what I thought. Okay. Well, I guess, you know, the tough one is disorderly conduct. And I know, I think I understand where Ms. Chenoweth was coming from in terms of not raising this, and, you know, I agree there. Disorderly conduct is just such a huge, so many things fall under disorderly conduct, and there are a lot of things that could be considered disorderly conduct that just really aren't all that serious. And then there are things that could be very, very serious. And I'm thinking in most cases that, again, would be something that if we're actually serious, that the police would arrest as opposed to just writing it. I'm trying to think, when would the police just write a ticket for disorderly conduct?
Well, it would, again, it gives us another process. It's really going to have to be of a serious nature for the state's attorney's office because of the case law prosecuted this overly come the case. Having an appropriate fine at the city level would give us still an alternative that still has some deterrent factor to it.
Okay, that makes sense.
I might be able to give an example that is relevant in my neighborhood and what, sometimes when there are loud parties and the house knows that, you know, they're not allowed to have amplified sound, but, you know, particularly as the weather's getting warmer, you have parties that go out onto the front porch, the back porch, in the backyard and so forth, and the people are talking at 2:00 in the morning and raise their voices. There may be no amplified sound. And, but yet, there are loud voices that are disrupting the neighborhood, and that's disorderly conduct. And that would be something that, as the chief said, they could give a ticket for, but the state's attorney's office is not going to prosecute.
That's a real good example, thank you.
Happens all, yeah, I know, I hear about it.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Well, one, I want to remind folks that these are minimum fines, not maximum fines. The second thing is that I'm not sure if I, my understanding from reading the noise ordinance, and I've read it multiple times because I get a lot of calls from constituents on this issue, and I have to reiterate the verbatim what the language of the noise ordinance is. I don't have my code of ordinances in front of me, but I believe that if I'm standing on my front porch shouting at the top of my lungs, which actually happened last week, my next door neighbor decided to have a party and they, at about 3:00 in the morning, got in the middle of the street and just started screaming at the top of their lungs and woke all of us up, I believe that that's covered under chapter 16, noise and vibrations prohibitions generally. I believe that basically if you are making noise, that can be, and it doesn't have to be amplified, that can be heard, it's on another person's property over a period of time. There are other ways to handle that. So as you'll notice, there's a significant, there's over, I suggest that we over, more than triple the noise violation minimum fine because it has been such a problem in our community. And I believe if things can be taken care of, those kind of noise and disruption, things can be taken care of under that rather than under disorderly conduct, which I believe is kind of the catch-all, when you can't find something else, use disorderly conduct. And so, yeah, I believe that, you know, fines kind of, you look at level severity, and there are things like refusing to obey the direction of a city or officer or employee could be as much as, you know, you need to get off of the sidewalk, and the person doesn't necessarily get off the sidewalk in a timely fashion, or they talk back, or whatever the case may be, and that is, that's on the, on the low end of problems, but I've certainly seen it happen. And then on the, on the upper end of the problem, there can be quite serious problems with someone actually hindering an officer in duty, in which case I don't believe that they would even fall under these things, that that would be on a level severity where the officer would actually take that person in, book them, and it would be another offense. So, so we're really, I think these pay by mail fines, I think we need to remember that when we're looking at the spectrum, we're really looking at kind of the, the small end of the spectrum, the things that are general, I think usually, you know, it's to look at nuisances, disturbances, problems that, that folks have, that, and, and we're looking at the first offense on a number of these issues. So I don't necessarily think that we need to be thinking about worst-case scenario in looking at the numbers on this. I would be, I am open to suggestions and changes and I, but, you know, I think that, that we should understand that these are minimum fines for generally minor offenses across the board.
Ms. Pat.
I have a question, and then I'm going to make a motion. Ms. Chenoweth made the point that these are minimum fines. Who decides when, when the fine is higher than the amount of the minimum fine?
A police officer could check that this must go to court, which doesn't necessarily increase it, but now that puts it in court, and the judge can fine anyone up to, I think we're at $500 maximum, anything up to 500. We may have raised it to 1,000, but anyway, he would have discretion within that area.
So be up, so the judge could raise it?
Yes.
Now, if a person has to go to court, in addition to the fine, they have to pay court costs, and that would be another 150, 200 dollars?
I think it's about 70 dollars nowadays, I think, it's in there.
To a small claims court costs more than that now, but.
They recently raised it, so I, maybe it is closer to 100.
We've got high fines.
It keeps going up, I know that.
Oh, here, actually, I got a list from somewhere, fine amount, the costs. Yeah, I guess if we're 75 dollar fine, oh, this isn't, this isn't recent, I don't think, but, yeah, it's not, I guess it's not 200 dollars. Did you want to say something before I make a motion?
Yeah, just to clarify that, though, Jack, the, if, if the officer writes a ticket for a pay by mail, the only option for pay by mail is the minimum.
Right.
And so if the officer wanted to say, well, he thought that this was a 150 dollar violence or violation rather than a 75, then it must be a notice to appear. Is that right?
Well, most of the city tickets are started with a notice to appear. Very seldom is it an arrest, really. And a notice to appear has two boxes, either one, pay by mail, is you're eligible to pay by mail, that'll settle it, or you must appear in court. And if it's must appear in court, then of course the court can levy the fine.
Does the officer have the discretion of writing the option to pay by mail for anything but the minimum fine?
No.
So it's the minimum fine only for the.
Minimum fine or go to court.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm not going to pile a bunch of things together because that didn't, wasn't working well at the last meeting, so I'm just going to make one motion so far, and that's to amend the motion for section 1560, disorderly conduct, to raise that fine to 135 dollars.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Pat.
Thanks for having us speak today. I understand Ms. Chenoweth's point about maybe being able to get people under the noise ordinance too, but if people are walking down the street, speaking very loudly and occasionally hooping and hollering, they, and collectively are generating a lot of noise, they may or may not fall under the category of the noise, under noise and vibrations because they're not generating noise beyond the boundary of their property, because they're not on their property, they're on the public street. And there probably are other types of, of behavior that would, that would fall into that category, and I know that, and I share the concern that people who aren't really doing anything wrong get charged with disorderly conduct, but I, and I don't know how often that happens, but I do know that the example that the mayor gave happens a lot, and it's, it is, and I don't know that higher fines will prevent it, but I do think that it's not, you know, people, people walking down the street just talking too loudly aren't getting grabbed by the police. It's when people are creating a disturbance and often moving that disturbance around and have caused enough trouble that someone even calls the police that, that they might get ticketed. And I don't even know that people will, I don't, I have mixed feelings about, about these fines working to address the noise problems that, that we have. But that is the main thing I've heard about from, from all of my constituents having to do with anything we're dealing with tonight is about noise and people being disturbed. And I think that, that it would be appropriate to, to raise the level of their fine to address a legitimate public concern.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of Ms. Pat's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or amendments? Ms. Pat.
I'll have to try another one. I move to amend the, the motion with regards to chapter four, animals and fouls prohibited at large responsibility of owner. I move to raise that fine also from 75 to 135 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth.
I just have a question. I'm a little unclear about prohibited. I do remember actually, as I was looking through the fines, I had to look up the violations that they're referring to, so I understood. But I'm not remembering at this point whether, what the difference between 4-1 and 4-23 is. Is that, is 4-23 that, that's the, the kind of get out of jail amount that you have to pay to get your dog out of impoundment? Or, I mean, if we're going to raise 4-1, I'm wondering if we should raise 4-23 as well. I know the mayor had mentioned that as well, and I'm not, I just, I just can't remember if those things have a relation with one another such that it would make sense to raise both of them. But it might.
And I'm sorry, I, I can't recall either the distinction between 4-1 and 4-23. I'd have to go back to code book myself.
I can't remember.
Okay, Ms. Pat.
I don't remember, but the intention here is the same, and if I can change my motion to have it applied to both of those sections, 4-1 and 4-23, the fine being raised to 135.
Will the second or accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to raise 4-1 and 4-23 to 135. Is there any other discussions or comments? If not, all in favor, please signify. I say aye?
Aye.
Reposed? That motion carries. Are there any other amendments? Okay. If there's no other amendments, I have some that I'd like to propose. So I guess Ms. Pat should take the chair if I'm going to be making motions.
I'd be happy to take the chair, but you can make motions.
Oh, I can, from the chair?
Yes.
All right. Well, that's what the chair of the Rules Committee says, then we'll go ahead and proceed in that way. One of the things that I would like to do, cruelty to animals is something that is really It's something we have at 185. I guess these are minimums, not maximums, so I'm going to go ahead and leave that one I'm going to go ahead and propose changing several in chapter 15, up to the maximum. And these are, are up to 280. These generally fall under the, the category of crimes of violence. Mob action isn't something that you see in the traditional sense anymore, but it does happen. In fact, recently, as in the last several years in Champaign, a homeless man was killed by some teenage boys being beat up. More generally, I think the times that it would probably apply, this ordinance would be applied would be in instances of bullying in schools. It would give a, a police officer the option to severely, well, to strongly punish anybody who's engaging in bullying without necessarily creating a criminal record that could follow them later on or getting them involved in the juvenile court system. So I would like to see 1561 and 1516 increased to 280. And I guess I'll, that'll be my motion for right now.
Second.
Ms., uh, all right, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I, I second the motion, uh, because I know where you're coming from, but I do have a question about assault.
Mm-hmm.
I know we've got, um, a couple lawyers here and a soon-to-be lawyer. My understanding, this person is now a lawyer, is that assault, um, is when you don't actually physically touch another person. Um, and that a wide range of things could be considered assault. And that, and that's my only concern here, since this is the minimum fine. What, uh, what would be, what would be an example of something that a police officer might ticket someone, I guess I'll ask the city attorney, ticket someone, um, for, if the charge were assault?
Well, my answer would be that it could be a variety of circumstances, so long as the totality of the circumstances put the victim in fear of receiving a battery or being struck. Um, I, I suppose, you know, the classical threat, uh, I'll kill you, you SOB or whatever like that, and, you know, approach him close enough that the person feels that they may very well get...
Okay. And that, um, would it be accurate to say that an assault is, is a battery other than the, the physical contact?
I think that's fair. For example, I think if somebody shouted the same words from across the street, that wouldn't be an assault. There's got to be a nearness enough that the person fears that the battery is next, very close.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Wyman?
I have, um, two questions. Would an assault be, if someone spit on someone else? I mean, is that an assault?
Well, it's also a battery. I, most batteries would, of course, have an assault too, but that would be a battery.
Okay. Um, and then I have a question with regard to the, um, the mob action example. Um, if mob action were to occur on, uh, school district grounds, like over the high school, the, um, the public high school, would that be subject to the city's jurisdiction and so subject to our minimum fines, or is that separate since it's school district property?
No, our ordinance is covered school district.
Okay. I was just wondering, since the school district boundaries are actually larger than the city, but there's...
Our ordinance is to cover school district property if it's in the city.
Okay.
Similarly, of course, our ordinance is covered university on my campus that, that's in the city.
Okay. And the park district that's in the city. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Chenoweth?
It's my understanding that if there's a, a victim, um, that they, people would not be paying fines by mail. Is that correct? That, that in a situation in which somebody is injured, um, the police officer's not necessarily going to issue a ticket and tell everyone to go home or go, go their separate ways. Is, is that correct? I, I'm just trying to get a picture. I think we're, we're muddying some things. I see the chief. Okay, so, so if there's, if somebody's been injured, then, then these things won't apply. This pay by fine, you know, the assault, for example, would probably be a threat. It's a threat situation. Mob action would be a situation where someone has not yet been injured. Um, there's a potential for injury, um, but they haven't been injured. And, um, I don't, I don't support Mr. Otto's, uh, motion, and, and I'll say why. Um, I wouldn't necessarily oppose increasing something like mob action to 135 to be in parity with the disorderly conduct that we just passed. But I feel like the, that, um, Mr. Otto explained a picture in his mind, which isn't really, I think, the picture that we're looking at when this ticket, these tickets are issued. Um, uh, I have recently gone through all the, um, all of the materials that the police department provided us a number of years ago when we were looking at school resource officer. And I looked at, um, all of the various offenses that had happened on school grounds. There's a lot of mob action, and there's a lot of disorderly conduct, and there's a lot of assault. And I know that in the, many of these cases, uh, there weren't necessarily victims, um, and in some cases there were. And so I think we need to think clearly that, you know, if there are kids and they're acting in a disorderly fashion and they're walking down the street, it may be considered that that's mob action. I think, I think that's really different than a situation where, right after 9/11, when people attacked mosques in Chicago, that was also mob action. But that's not the kind of mob action that's actually covered by these things. Um, it would be covered in a different way. There would be hate, hate crimes and whatnot. So I really think that we have to be careful that there's maybe a picture in our mind of what these things mean, but what, how they're actually panning out. And really, you know, I'd be happy to hear the police department's input on this because I think ultimately they have a better sense of when they're ticketing people for these kinds of things and when they aren't. But I think that assault, which could be, um, someone losing their temper, and mob action, which could be a group of kids acting in a disorderly way, that really 280 dollars is not an appropriate minimum fine. And that what, what Mr. Otto is act, acting, asking us to do is to, uh, I believe, quadruple, almost quadruple our fine for mob action. And I think that, that, that's, that's out of line with what, what this line item means. I think that the police department would know when mob action is more serious offense, would not just be issuing tickets in that case, but would actually be, um, you know, summoning people to, to, to appear in court. Uh, so I'm worried about situations in which we're imposing very high fines, and a lot of these fines are actually being used with youth in a school context. And I, I don't think that we should go there.
Um, Ms. Chief, do you have any comment on that?
Well, uh, in a very serious situation, of course, we would not use a city ordinance period. Uh, the example that, uh, all the woman Chenoweth used, we would go with state or federal violation in those kinds of instances because the, the incidents she used are far more serious.
Talking to Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, in the most serious instance, we would go with, uh, felony charges. Uh, and we're talking here misdemeanor charges. So, uh, we're talking, uh, the higher the fine position I take is, the more deterrent it has with it. Uh, and certainly we have more options on school property than we have in the street even because there are certain state and federal laws that govern contact, conduct while on school ground. But there would be opportunities in unruly group, uh, setting, uh, where that ordinance would be applicable, that one of our larger, uh, venues in the campus town area. Uh, that would be very appropriate for us, and these were young adults. These were not juveniles. Uh, and, uh, an ordinance of this magnitude would have benefit for us in that instance, where we're dealing with, uh, 18, 20-year-olds. That, uh, situation started in the campus town and went all the way to Bradley area, both in Urbana and Champaign. Uh, I could see the benefit under those circumstances. But, uh, we have sufficient, uh, enforcement capacity when it's on this public school because that's governed by state and federal laws, uh, in many instances. So, but in the street, it could certainly have benefit.
So Chief, the incident that you're talking about happened within the last year?
Yes.
So you...
Within the last six months.
Right. So you feel that, that if the mob action fine were increased, that would have been a useful tool for you in that particular incident?
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Haddish?
You know, a lot of times, uh, there are two groups confronting each other, and, uh, they really, I mean, they sound dangerous, but a lot of times, the only thing they're doing is selling wolf tickets. And so when these kind of things happen, uh, is there a warning, hey, why don't you guys break this stuff up and go on home? Or you just go in and, uh, and try to disperse the crowd without even, you know, giving them a warning to say, hey, why don't you guys break this up and go on? Because a lot of times, that's what they want somebody to do. They say, break it up, and then both of them save face. It's a win-win situation. Well, if there are no serious injuries, that's always our first option is to attempt to disperse the crowd. But failing at that, then we have to take, uh, uh, enforcement actions. The example I used was a case in court. Uh, we tried several times to disperse this group. And, uh, ultimately, we made multiple arrests. And what I'm saying is if we had a city ordinance that was appropriate, in many instances, there we could have used the city ordinance, must appear in court scenario versus charging them with state violations because that's, we felt that it was serious enough that it warranted that. Uh, our view, what you're attempting to do tonight is just enhancing and bringing up to date an optional tool that the men and women of the police department would have when making that decision, oftentimes involving people that, this is the first time that we've encountered them, that would be an effective tool to give them an opportunity to have consequences for that behavior, but yet you're keeping them out of the criminal justice system. And, uh, so to that effect, I think it would be beneficial to the police department. And the other being that oftentimes people are not aware that they in Urbana or Champaign, it puts some parenting between, uh, the two cities. And to me, that is important, especially to the college student who really doesn't know when they're in Champaign or when they're in Urbana. And, uh, and the ones that when they learn that they are, of course, for alcohol violations, they come to Urbana because it's more economical.
Isn't it?
Um, are there any other questions or comments? I guess, uh, I'll just say in response to Ms. Chenoweth's comment, I think that, you know, she's right. If somebody is seriously injured, they're probably going to be charged under the, the criminal ordinance and, and be in line for jail time. But I don't agree that just because somebody isn't seriously injured, uh, there's no injury at all. In fact, um, you know, often when you're presented with, uh, bullying and intimidation, uh, the injury is that somebody who ought to be able to go about their way unmolested is simply not allowed to do that, uh, because of who they are. And maybe, you know, there's pushing and shoving, but not to the extent that, you know, a bone is broken or, or something like that. Um, but it's very serious. And, I mean, Ms. Chenoweth is right, that it's something that is unfortunately not uncommon in schools and hasn't been uncommon in most schools probably ever in history. It's, it's all too common. And I, I think too often, uh, adults who have the responsibility for, uh, trying to make sure that, uh, that schools and other areas are safe have just sort of turned the other way because, uh, somebody isn't popular. Um, and I think we ought to, uh, enforce it. I, I think it's something that, uh, is inexcusable, and, uh, I don't think you'll have to issue very many of, of these tickets before you get people's attention. And, uh, um, you'll cut down on it. Um, so, uh, I hope that we will go ahead and, and pass the motion and increase that fine. Uh, Ms. Wyman?
Um, just want to explain, I think I'm, I, I intend to vote in favor of Mr. Otto's motion. I guess I'm not completely convinced that, um, a 280 dollar fine is going to be more effective, uh, on those who are, um, creating mob action or assaults than the current 75 dollar fine. I guess with, I, I, I haven't seen all the information or gone through all the information probably as well as, um, Ms. Chenoweth has or is, or note as well as Chief Adair does. Um, and I recognize also that this is a committee of the whole meeting and that, uh, things can change before the final vote on the, the council, uh, on the council floor next week or, or whenever we end up doing a final vote on this. Um, so I, I will vote yes, uh, tonight, um, and then intend to speak more with, um, Ms. Chenoweth and, um, with anyone else who's got further information, since this is just an issue that's come up tonight regarding the, the proposed change. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Chenoweth?
I would, uh, since I, I feel like I'm losing ground here, I would just ask folks, um, to consider voting down the motion and bringing forward a motion that I think is more reasonable. Um, assault is different than battery. It was clear, Mr. Otto had one picture, and it was a different one. Battery is at 280. I don't understand why assault would be at that same level. Mob action, you know, we, we make these pictures in our mind of what's going on, and I really wish, I actually wish that committee members, without assuming too much, that, that they had more interaction with people who receive these kinds of fines because I think, um, we would have a better picture of the range of, of things that this means. Um, we know that kids who congregate, um, in groups, well, one, that media has perception of children congregating groups as gangs and that they're responded to in that way. Um, kids bullying, absolutely. If there's something like that happening, I think that that falls under battery. That falls under assault. It doesn't necessarily have to fall under mob action. To me, mob action is, is a very big, um, term. I'm sure it's used appropriately in some contexts. In other contexts, I worry about it, especially given the number of times I've seen it, uh, with, in school reports. And I do know that bullying happens in groups, and I just, um, I just don't think that we, um, need to go overboard with fines where we don't really understand the range of offenses that are used to impose those fines. So I would urge committee members, I sent this out on Thursday. I received one comment saying it was fine. I didn't receive any other comments in terms of changes. Um, it bothers me that committee members would, would, would not give feedback on it. We wouldn't have some of this ability to have this discussion. Instead, we'd have lengthy discussion tonight. But if that's the way it is, I just feel like, uh, these things should be given careful consideration and, 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 and we should understand the consequences on, uh, the homeless, on, on youth, and, um, protesters, et cetera. There are a lot of different, um, ways in which these are used, and it's not just the one picture we have in our mind of these offenses.
Ms. Wyman?
I'm wondering if, um, if the chief thinks he could, uh, or either he or from his department or from, um, school resource officer get, uh, bring to us or for our packets, um, a list of the, um, assaults and the mob actions, um, and the batteries, that what actually happened, a list of those, um, the incidents, and then perhaps characteristics, whether it happened on school grounds, um, or, or other characteristics. Was it a youth, or was it, um, if you, uh, any sort of other characteristics or information that might be helpful, um, so that we could, I think, get a better understanding. Uh, clearly, as Ms. Chenoweth has pointed out, there's varying views and understandings of what is mob action, um, and, and also what are assaults. And if we could get a better idea, I think that would help clarify what, at least what I think would be appropriate for a minimum fine. And I, I presume it could at least be helpful to others as well. Is that possible?
I can get you the statistics, the number of individuals charged, both in our community and, uh, on the school. Is that what you're asking me to get?
Actually, I'd like examples of when people are charged for mob action, what, what actually were they doing that gave them the charge of mob action? Uh, similarly assault. Were they threatening someone from three feet away? Were they, um, you know, did they, I don't know, were they carrying a loaded gun and threatened to shoot someone? Or was it they threatened to beat them up? Or was it something very minor? Uh, or what I think some of us would consider very, not as, not as threatening? Does that make sense?
Yes. Uh, can I give you a summary for a very small period of time? Because what you asking for?
Because what you're asking for, you know, I can retrieve the number of incidents immediately. But what you're asking for has to be extracted from the narrative of the report, which slows the process down substantially.
I guess I don't need, what I don't need is, I don't need numbers, but examples of what are the mob actions? So anyone who was charged with mob action, three examples? What did they do?
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah. If that's all you want, I can do that.
Thank you.
And battery and assault?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Ms. Pat.
I was just going to suggest three examples as opposed to what would have been, what you first asked for would have been this huge report and would take a lot of the chief's time. And I don't think it's necessary. We just like a few real examples so we can understand better what's going on. And that's what you're saying? Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the motion? If there's no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. The chair, the ayes have it. So that motion carries. The one last issue I'm going to bring up is throwing stones, missiles, et cetera. And basically, we're once again dealing with something that's a variety of assault or I suspect that, you know, as Ms. Chenoweth has said before, if somebody is seriously injured, they're probably going to be charged with a serious crime that contains jail time. Nevertheless, there is, you know, intimidation that happens. And I think that's probably when this ordinance is going to be used. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we increase that to 185.
Was that 185 or 135?
Section 1571.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Ms. Wyman.
I think this is a question for Mr. Waller. But if someone were throwing stones, could they also be charged under the assault? So could they be charged for both throwing stones and then for assaulting that is threatening the, or, well, assault?
Well, I guess again, it would depend on a particular circumstances. If someone were close enough that you felt you're surely going to get hit as opposed to 50 feet away. I suppose, you know, if you're standing three feet away with a rock in your hand and threw it and just barely missed their ear, I guess that would be an assault.
And.
It's very much factor of it, I think.
Sure. Missiles, obviously, when it says throwing stones and missiles, they're, well, this is a nuclear free zone, so it wouldn't be certain kind of missiles. But what does that mean? Throwing stones, missiles, et cetera. What are the missiles? Is that like?
Snowballs.
Snowballs. So you could get fined currently $75 for throwing snowballs?
If somebody is dumb enough to make that charge, yeah. And if the judge actually found somebody guilty. I can't think of any incident where that was ever charged unless it was really malicious type action. But I don't recall a charge on snowballs. But that would be a missile, I think.
I'm sure Mrs. Wyman is familiar with the concept of, you know, the license of the playground, where if there's a friendly snowball fight and everybody's having fun and everybody's participating, there's no tort there, there's no crime there, you're all having fun, the same way that if you're playing football and, you know, you tackle somebody, that's not a battery. Or if you threaten to tackle somebody, it's not an assault. So, you know, I think it's easy to, you know, you can try to oppose just about anything using reductio ad absurdum arguments. But, you know, in reality, to convince a police officer to charge someone, I think there's going to have to be some element of maliciousness.
I can't think of one where snowballs would be logical. Maybe kids throwing snowballs at cars.
Sure.
That could cause an accident. I could see if the police officer told them not to do that and they persisted, I could see that being charged. But I don't think, I don't remember seeing it.
Sure.
That would be logical, though.
Or maybe throwing a snowball, especially when they're, when it's wet snow and damaging, hitting a porch, hitting a window.
Yeah. It'd be causing an accident or damage, and I could see that. But I'll just bet the policeman to give them a warning first.
Sure. No, I understand that. And if I would have known about this proposed change beforehand, I would have clarified that beforehand as well. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If there's no other questions or comments, everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. In the opinion of the chair, I believe there's a tie. Could we ask for a show of hands? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have three aye votes. All opposed? Okay, we have three no votes. Is the mayor empowered to break ties at committee or? Okay. Well, then that motion fails for lack of a majority. That's all the amendments that I have. Are there any other amendments to the main motion? Okay, is there any other discussion on the main motion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Ms. Huth? Mr. Otto?
Present.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Whalen? Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the update on the Carl Foundation Hospital and Provena Covenant Medical Center charity care programs.
I'd like to start out just by saying that after the last town board meeting in April, the board expressed interest in putting this on the agenda for the purpose of getting some feedback from Provena and from Carl. So I extended an invitation to both entities to come up here tonight. And Cheryl Harmon of Provena is here and will be ready to answer questions. I received in the mail today a copy of the policy for the Provena charity care program. And there is a copy in your place there. I realize you may not have had time to read it. And I know one of the questions that came up during the town board meeting a couple of weeks ago is whether or not both Carl and Provena would consider including in their policies that Cunningham Township clients could automatically be eligible for the charity care programs. And I think there is some thought because it's in Urbana and the hospital is in Urbana and we have the, have had the issue in the past of Provena being tax exempt, that this might be a benefit to provide two clients of Urbana. The response I have gotten, which you have in front of you, there is the policy itself. There is a graph that shows how much charity care has been provided. And then a letter from Mark Weiner, that he's not able to be here tonight, but Cheryl Harmon is representing the township. And the response to our questions are basically that it would not be possible to automatically include Cunningham Township clients, because that would not fit into the guidelines that are written as they are. And so I would like to invite Ms. Harmon up to the table here to answer any questions that you may have, or if she wants to elaborate also further on how the response to this was formulated.
Do you have some prepared remarks, Ms. Harmon, or should we just go straight to questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Ms. Wyman.
I appreciate you coming tonight. And I guess my question is in response to the statement signed by, the letter signed by Mr. Weiner, that it would be a violation of the policy to handle or to allow township clients to be able to have, or I guess be provided, the charity care. If there's a reason why the policy can't be changed to allow that, I mean, does that make sense?
Right. There's a, this is actually a system-wide policy. This is just not Provena Covenant. And the policy is intended, this financial assistance policy is intended, there's not really a source of funding for this. This is just a write-off at the hospital level. So as any organization would do, we really need to exhaust the other sources of funding for hospital care before we get to the point where we actually would write off charges. That's the essence of the policy.
And system-wide, what does that mean? Is that all of the Provena?
All of the Provena hospitals.
I see. But is there a reason why, why there couldn't be a system-wide policy change? Because I understand, well, in Illinois, you've got townships that are required to provide general assistance to anyone who qualifies. And since Provena has hospitals, as I understand it, throughout many areas in Illinois, it seems like then it would actually make sense to do a system-wide policy change.
We could, however, the other thing we have to consider is how much charity care we're currently providing, which is why, one of the reasons we attached the graphic. You can see the amount of charity care. We've already broadened our policy to up to 300% of the federal poverty guidelines. The amount of charity care we're providing is actually grown substantially last year and continues to grow this year as we make the policy more generous. And what I've given you is actually charity care provided at cost, not at charges. And with that, and with our margins being as slim as they are, you know from the newspaper articles that we actually posted a loss of almost $700,000 last year. There's only so much we can give away, so much we can write off. And so it really is a decision more of how do we remain viable and continuing to be able to provide financial assistance to the community.
And the decision to increase the charity care eligibility up to 300%, was that, is that a system-wide change as well?
Yes.
And when did that system-wide change go into effect?
It was in February.
February of this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, and does Provena set an amount that they would like or that they could see reasonable as having a charity care amount provided and then say, all right, we're, you know, we can raise it up to 300% of federal poverty level or something like that, and to meet that amount of donated charity care? Or how does, how are those levels set?
We really looked at across the country where different organizations were as far as the charity care policies. We're trying to be consistent in the healthcare community. And we're trying to be fair. If you look at the federal poverty guidelines, they are, they're fairly small. I mean, it's, you know, you know what they are. So at 300%, it doesn't mean at 300% there would be 100% charity care given, but we give discounts up to 300%. It's 100% write-off up to 120% of the federal poverty guidelines. So we really tried to do it looking at our communities and saying, based on our communities, what is a way we can give back the most to the folks who need it the most? So we want to get to those individuals who really don't have the ability to pay their bills and still maintain collection efforts or try and get payment from other sources, other insurance companies, other sources, be they government or otherwise, to fund the rest of the healthcare. Okay. Oh, you look forward for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
As we've discussed here before, this is really a matter of who is the healthcare provider of last resort. And obviously, you want your policy to be that you're the provider of last resort. And the township's policy has been that we're the provider of last resort. And so it's a battle to see who's last. And because everybody wants all the other resources to be exhausted before they're sent the bill. And so we have a common interest there. But, so, when, in reading the memo, it says to be willing to discuss or willing to consider our clients after all resources have been exhausted. So if we, for instance, budget, I don't know, what's the number we've been budgeting for medical services, $30,000 or $40,000 a year?
$150,000 this year, and we've, we're amending that to $180,000.
Okay, well, I'm off the hook. So if we put in the budget $150,000 a year, and then we exhaust that amount of money and we say, well, we'd like to be able to provide medical service for this client, but we don't have any money in that line item anymore. And Provena's evaluation of that client's case, would you determine that the resources have been exhausted and then pick up the medical expenses for that client?
Depending upon, and actually, this is something that Ms. Elliott and I discussed, that would depend upon the guidelines by the Cunningham Township. If Cunningham Township right now indicates that they will pay anyone who, regardless of the budget amount, that there will be payment made for anyone who qualifies. If the Cunningham Township, and I'm not sure whether they are bylaws or articles, indicated that the budget is, when the budget is exhausted, no other funding is available till the next fiscal year, then certainly we would abide by that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Wyman.
I'm curious if general assistance clients, when they receive services at Provena Hospital, if they're charged at cost or if they're charged at a different rate and what that rate would be?
All bills go out at the same rate. So all charges, anyone who gets an itemized bill, the charges are the same for a Medicare patient, for a commercially insured patient, for a self-paid patient, for a Medicaid patient. The charges are always the same.
And the billing, like, my understanding is that sometimes insurance carriers or even individual payers could say, I'll pay this whole bill off of $1,200 or something, without challenging it if I can pay just $1,000 or try and negotiate a smaller amount. Is that at all done with general assistance and the $150,000, well, that's between two hospitals probably, but with the amount that is paid by the townships?
If that is an issue that's brought to the table, I'm sure it would be. There's actually a law in the state of Illinois that deals with prompt pay discounts that we follow. A prompt pay discount is basically a 5% discount within, if payment is made within 30, I apologize, I can't remember if it's 30 or 45 days, but we would follow the guidelines of the law that prevails regarding prompt pay.
Are there any other questions?
Actually, I'd like to respond to that route. All of the bills that we pay are paid at the rate prescribed by public aid, so it wouldn't matter, I mean, what kind of discount there was. We pay just a very small amount for what is charged, and that has to be considered as payment in full. So whatever balance there is, is gone and can't be collected from anyone. So I think it's a matter of if we paid it sooner, would it be less or anything? We have to pay at the public aid rate. Does that help?
Yes, that helps. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Chenoweth.
I have a, first a question for Ms. Elliott. The payer of last resort stipulation, is that Illinois state law or is that our own law?
No, that's in the stat, I don't know if the payer of last resort is stated such in the statutes, but in the rules that we follow, which are based on the statutes, it doesn't allow for us not to provide assistance to somebody even if we run out of money. You know, it's one of those things, if people are eligible, then you can't stop serving them because you might not have the money. Now, what happens? And this is where I don't know if there's some room for negotiation on. Our budget is written, keeping in mind the estimates of property tax we're going to be receiving. And so if we spend all of the money in the general assistance budget and yet need more money, that's when we start taking it from town fund. And say if town fund didn't have a surplus, then what we would have to do is probably issue tax anticipation warrants or notes to borrow off the next year's tax money. So I think there are some distinctions maybe that could be made of. So I think there are some distinctions maybe that could be made of, well, when we run out of the money that's budgeted, and there is no other left in general assistance, you know, and, and maybe that's something to, to talk about with the Pravina. It's, it's kind of tricky, because we can be out of money, but that doesn't stop our obligation to provide services.
Yeah, it's tricky because we're under tax caps. So actually, on the one hand, we have a policy that says we have to pay no matter what. On the other hand, we're under tax caps, which means when the money's gone, it's gone. And as we'll talk about later this evening, you know, we've heard from the county clerk that, that there's a limit to what, what we can do in terms of raising taxes. I appreciate you coming down tonight, and I'm, we did receive a letter from, from Carl Foundation Hospital, or Carl, I guess, it was either the clinic or the hospital, saying that they were interested in speaking to us about some of the things that have been in the news recently. And I was hoping that this, that the request to speak with them tonight would be seen as a response to their request to speak with us. And maybe it wasn't seen that way, but I certainly would like to see them come to the table in the future. And I'm, and I'm disappointed that we did not receive a response from them. But happy to see that Pravina Covenant Medical Center is represented here tonight. I have a couple of questions. One is, it's my understanding that it's industry standard that, and now actually state law, that nonprofit hospitals, and I know your status is kind of up in the air right now, but need to provide a statement of community benefit. As a council member, for the last three years, I haven't seen a statement of community benefit come out of Pravina Covenant. I've seen some of the things that you do, like all-girls radio and other kinds of, I think, important contributions to the community, but I haven't seen that kind of assessment of what, what the community benefit is to, to give back to the community on the level that, that you receive in terms of a, basically, a tax abatement through nonprofit, profit status. So my question to you is, is it possible for us in the future to receive a statement of community benefit from Pravina Covenant Medical Center, and for that to be distributed to council members?
Certainly. Before I, I go further, though, I'd like to clarify one thing. Pravina Covenant's tax-exempt status is not actually what's at question. Our 501(c)(3) status remains intact and unquestioned. What is at issue is our exemption from paying property taxes only. Just as a clarification, because that-
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
It gets expressed that way, but the, your question about the community benefit, the Community Benefit Act in Illinois does, does require us to report, and the first report is due at the beginning of 2005. And we certainly will share that. And that's why I actually provided the charity care piece of it, or the financial assistance piece of it, as kind of a prelude to the full packet. But we actually have some tracking in place now to identify all of the different community benefit pieces, and we've tracked that internally. We've provided some of that to the Champaign County Board of Review, everything we had at the time during their questioning, and also to the Department of Revenue. So by all means, when, as soon as we submit that little copy out to the-
Okay. That, that would be useful. The second question I have is actually council members, well, township. Wearing our council member hats, we have the Consolidated Social Service Funding Pool Packet on our desk tonight, and one of, I noticed that one of the applications that have been submitted has come from Pravina Covenant Medical Center Foundation, and we received a, a, funding from, from the foundation last year, or we received an application last year, and were not able to fund it last year. And one of the arguments that I made last year, and I just want, would like to make that argument before you tonight, because I'll probably be making it this year as well, is, is that it's difficult, given that Pravina Covenant, and I know the foundation's different than the medical center, et cetera, but that Pravina Covenant Medical Center, you know, previously not paying property taxes, and potentially in the future not paying property taxes, that, that what, it's been difficult for us to, for me to support social service funding to Pravina, given that in many ways, social service funding oftentimes comes out of our tax base, and Pravina hasn't been contributing to that tax base directly. And so I guess one thing I wanted to convey to you is that, is that as long as Pravina Covenant Medical Center is not paying property taxes, it's difficult for us to justify with, we're looking at actually cutting social service funding by half this year because of medical expenses. And we'll be talking about that in the next part of this meeting. But, you know, there are a number of agencies in the community that rely on the township fund to support it as part, and support its staff, et cetera, and basic essential services. And given that we've seen an escalating, you know, rise in healthcare costs, and that has really been nationwide, it's not specific to this community at all, but it really is a crisis that I think as a nation we're, we're facing, and that we're going to have to do something about. And due to that, we have to, we'll be transferring significant funds, $40,000, I believe, from township fund into, from our social service funding, which we would have given to just pay off medical bills. And so I think it's difficult for us to support this funding Pravina Medical Center applications to us out of tax base, as long as Pravina's not contributing to that tax base. Despite the fact that I think that the applications that, that Pravina has submitted have been strong, and there certainly needed services, I would prefer to see Pravina provide those services through its community benefit, its giving back to the community.
I noticed that some representative or somebody wearing a Carl name tag walked in. Are you here to address the Budget Committee concerning the charity care programs, or are you here for the city?
No.
Okay. Ms. Wyman.
Yeah, who, who is in charge of making, or who makes the decisions for system-wide policy changes? Like when Pravina Covenant in February of this year decided to increase the, or to change the eligibility requirement? Who, who makes those decisions?
Those decisions are made by system leadership with approval by the Pravina Health Board.
And system leadership, who is that?
That would be a group of folks in our corporate offices in Mokina.
In Mokina?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and, and then, so by the officers in Mokina, and who else Pravina?
Our Pravina Health Board.
Is that the community, like, there's a group of people in the community who are on a board, is that, that board?
Yes.
And how often do they meet?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'm not on that board.
Okay. But if we needed to contact them, would we go, would we ask you, would we get that, those addresses from you?
You could actually, yeah, or you could, exactly. You could do it through us, or you could funnel your requests through us. They, obviously, system leadership makes those decisions with the input from all of the facilities as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just quickly, one more. Do you know if Cankey or Danville, the townships there have talked to you about similar concerns or problems?
They have not.
They have not?
Not in many words.
Okay. And they, they may be receiving units, which means they are at the point where they aren't paying medical stuff anymore. So that could be something I could look into. And thanks, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have several. I noticed on your charity care graph, you said Pravina Central Illinois Region. How many facilities do you have in that region?
The, the graphic itself is only for Pravina Covenant.
Oh, it is?
It is only for Pravina Covenant.
Oh. It said, well, it says Central Illinois Region, but that's just the Urbana Hospital?
But if you look at the bottom, it says PCMC.
Okay.
That's Covenant. The Central Illinois Region comprised two facilities. That would be Pravina United Samaritans in Danville, Pravina Covenant here in Urbana. But this graphic is only for Covenant.
Okay. What, how many, what are the gross revenues of your Urbana facility?
For an annual period?
Yeah.
The gross revenues would probably approximate about 200, over $200,000. And I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head, I didn't bring-
Sure. But that gives us an idea, so, over $200,000 or over $200 million?
$200 million.
Yeah, okay.
Zeros.
Okay. So the charity care is a little less than 1% of the gross revenues, according to this chart.
Well, you, you have to, when you're looking at gross revenues, that's charges. What I've given you is information at cost.
Right. The next question I have is, you were saying earlier that you bill out everything at the same rate, whether it's the insurance companies, or self-pay, or Urbana Township. Did I, did I understand that correctly? You're saying that they don't go ahead and negotiate discounts with you, that everybody is charged the same rate?
What I indicated was that everyone's bill reflects the same rate. All charges are the same, across the population. What we get reimbursed depends upon the insurance, depends upon the township, depends upon Medicare rates, Medicaid rates, et cetera.
Okay. So the actual, saying their bill reflects the same rate, but their actual charge may be lower?
The charge will be the same, the reimbursement may be lower.
Okay. So, but you accept a lower reimbursement and then eliminate the charge if you get that lower reimbursement? So if an insurance company negotiates a 20% discount, they get a bill, but if they just pay 80% of the bill, it's then taken off the clients?
Correct.
Are there any insurance companies or HMOs that have a lower reimbursement rate than Urbana Township?
No.
Oh, Cunningham Township, sorry.
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you that, but I can tell you, the Cunningham Township is, basically pays at Medicaid rates, IPA rates, which are fairly low. So my guess would be no.
Okay. Well, the situation we're in is where, you know, even a relatively small reduction, say 20%, in our reimbursement rate would be a small, a small difference to the Pravina facility in Urbana, but it'd make a fairly substantial difference to us, particularly since we're bumping up against the limits of tax caps. And, you know, I hope that's something that we can consider and maybe work on negotiating a further discount. I do appreciate you coming out tonight to talk to us. I'm disappointed Carl didn't send representatives as well, because we certainly expect them to pull their weight in the community in return for their property tax exemption, just as we expect you all to. But perhaps we'll have a chance to bring that up with them later, so, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chenoweth.
I would like to get a sense of the, of the township trustees as to whether we should direct Ms. Elliott to basically follow up on this issue of trying to, to define in writing kind of when is payer of last resort? Like, if, if we basically increase our township funds, and then, our, our general assistance funds, and then they're, they are drawn to, to the zero point, could we negotiate with Pravina that at that point, we would be considered having exhausted our funds? I have a, the letter in front of us from our Weiner states in the, in the second paragraph, you know, "we are more than willing to consider your clients after all resources have been exhausted." And so the question is, when is that point? I mean, there, there is some point when there are no more resources, and so I guess we need to clarify what that is, and if it means when the general assistance fund is drained. And certainly, I think, you know, the township is, is ready to pay more and put more into that general assistance fund, but if at that point, we're drained down to zero, we've really done all that we, we can do to be financially, to be fiscally responsible, and we can't do much more in terms of raising taxes. So I, I would ask Ms. Elliott, and kind of get a sense of, of the township as to whether or not township trustees support Ms. Elliott going forward and trying to negotiate some language that both parties could agree on.
Yes. Yeah, I'd be happy to pursue that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I should say that I, the same letter was sent to Carl that was sent to Pravina. One of the differences in earlier responses is that Carl said to go ahead and have clients fill out applications now that they will consider funding, not waiting till the funds ran out. So we have been busy having clients come in, and we've, we've been sending them off and have not yet received their response. But although they did not come to this meeting, we are actively sending information to them.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Elliott. I appreciate it. And I hope that Pravina will consider doing the same thing. It's, you know, less than a drop in the bucket for Pravina, but it makes a big difference to both needy people in Urbana and to the, to the taxpayers in Urbana in trying to operate the township on a fiscally responsible basis. So thank you for coming.
Thanks, Cheryl.
All right. Ms. Wyman?
I just have one other thing from Ms. Elliott. I certainly agree with the sense of the council, and think that, just want to point out, probably another step is to start to engage the system leadership, the officers in Mokina, and the Pravina Health Board, which is a local board, in making the system-wide policy change necessary to, to permit general assistance clients, certainly in Urbana. And my guess is if they made a system-wide policy change, it would affect the other, might affect Cankey, Danville, or other communities. But it seems like that's, that's also another place for engagement, so that they understand that the detriment as far as property taxes that the city of Urbana has put in, and the township has put in when, when we have, when we have general assistance clients to pay for, but a lack of property taxes due to the, the not-for-profit status of hospitals.
Right. No, I will be happy to do all that I can.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2003, 2004 amended budget final draft. Ms. Elliott.
And I should point out that the, there is no action required on either of these budget agenda items. However, there's important information that you should know about before we consider them at the May meeting for adoption. The amended budget draft, which is the one in white, is, it's a constantly updated document, depending on what bills we have just gotten in and, and hope to pay before the end of April, or before the end of June, I'm sorry, the fiscal year. So I'm, I'm hoping that these are the last adjustments that will need to be made based on the bills that have come in, in the assessor's office and the township office, and then with the caseload and what we can afford to eke out as far as paying some medical bills. We probably have more than the amount remaining in the line item to pay, but one of the things we can do is delay payment to Pravina and, and Carl while this is all being worked out. So we will exhaust what is left in the amended budget, and then go on to the next fiscal year. So next, at the meeting in May next week, if there are any small adjustments, I will make those to the amended budget. Now, this does call for a $34,000 transfer from Town Fund, from the, the surplus to balance the budget. So that's something that, that will happen. I think it was $32,000 when I was thinking, in the, in the April budget that I had put together, but 34 is going to be more likely to be needed, and that comes out of the Town Fund surplus. We can adopt the final amended draft either in May or June, and the sooner we adopt it, then the sooner we can go on and pay some of the bills that have been, that we're holding off on. And the other change that, that this draft has in it is that the homelessness prevention program for rent and utilities, that's zip, we've had to, to, to bring those to zero to, to get all of the money that we can, without going further into that.
Ms. Pat.
Thank you. In looking at these documents, it appears that the total revenue from taxes will be lower in fiscal year 2005 than it was in fiscal year 2003. Is that correct, or am I reading this wrong?
It should be higher than 2000, the fiscal 2003?
Yes.
What page are you on, Ms. Pat?
I'm looking actually at the, at the cover pages of-
Should we be looking at page one?
I'm looking at page one of the white copy, and page one of the yellow, and under the, the lines revenues for fiscal year 2002, 2003, the total of Town Fund and General Assistance revenues, so I assume that's the total of tax revenue, is that correct?
It's mostly, well, it-
It's mostly, well, yeah, it's mostly property tax. There may be like $20,000, that's other miscellaneous forms of revenue, but for the most part, that's-
Okay, very similar.
Now, that, I'm thinking, the revenues in general assistance fund are going to reflect the transfer from town fund, but that would only appear in the amended amount.
But the total, the total column is the total revenue for the fiscal year. Is that right?
Okay. Which, I'm sorry, I was-
I'm sorry, I'm looking right on page one of each of the white and the yellow documents.
Okay. The-
Our total revenue for fiscal year 2003, was that $838,000? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And so then, for fiscal year 2004, it's dropped to $806,000? Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's the amended amount.
And then for fiscal year 2005, that'll be the front page of the yellow, it would be $829,000.
Yeah, actually, I know what can explain this now. Even though the amount of property tax we receive has gone up, it's the other sources of income, such as interest income. That used to be, we would get $20,000 per fund out of that, and now we're lucky to get $2,000. So it's the interest income, and then the, in the general assistance fund miscellaneous income, that's where we put the SSI reimbursements that come in, and that's something that is, we're never quite sure of, although it's been high the last couple of years. That's what makes sense in these cases, that it's interest income mostly.
And the other question related to that is the, could you just, as clearly and concisely as possible, explain the memo from the county clerk? It appears that, well, explain it and tell us if there's anything we can do about it?
Yeah, this is the, there's something from the county clerk, which shows the assessed valuation. When we make the levy request, we're working off an estimate of what the total assessed valuation of the city is. We don't have final figures, so we're, guessing wouldn't quite be the word, but we're going by figures that the assessor gives us, yet there's a lot of unknowns as far as what might be exempt from that, the amount of new property that's come in. So it's just an estimate of what we think we're going to be working off of. The total assessed valuation of $388,735,759 is probably about $10 million, or 10 to 20 million less than Joanne Chester and I had estimated the valuation would be. And then when we make a request for the levy, we're capped at a 2.4% increase plus the percentage of new construction. And so when we're not dealing with exact figures, we're estimating what the new construction percentage will be. So I requested $840,000, which was probably a little more than I thought we might get, but to ensure that we could get everything we could, that's what I did. And then, within those requests, there are rate limits per fund. As an example, in general assistance fund, we'll never get more than 10% per $100 of assessed valuation. And so the, when you see the column that says levy amount, and then rate, and then the Champaign County extension, that extension is what we could get based on the rates of the two funds, of the total assessed valuation. Okay, then, the extension, though, if that's over the capped amount, which it was, then the amount we're extended is even lowered more by what the capped amount is. So where you see capped extension, each fund was lowered proportionally to give us the total. It's the aggregate levy that they're looking at, even though we have rate limits within that. Now, of the $784,000, we do have some flexibility if we want one of those funds to be increased a little bit, and then taking away from another fund. So on the back of this is a letter I had written to the county clerk, requesting that they slightly increase the general assistance extension, so that at least we could try and operate next year without having to borrow money. And of course, that will lower somewhat the town fund extension, just because you can't go over the $784,000, so.
And so, by law, because of tax caps, the maximum amount of tax revenue that the township may receive on total assessed valuation of $388 million, you know, et cetera, with 9.5 million of it being reconstruction, is $784,000, is that the point?
Yes, yeah.
So if we had known these numbers, we couldn't, this is not something we could have corrected when we settled our levy budget.
Right. I mean, we levied enough so that we would make sure we got as much as we could-
I see.
-with what we were given. And it's always an estimate when you're working with unknowns, too, of what the assessed valuation is going to be.
Okay.
And even with a lot of new construction, too. You know, that was very helpful.
That's even harder to guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it would have been lower.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Chenoweth?
So just a follow-up clarification, there's no way to go back to the county clerk if we have a higher EAV in the community than we anticipated to request a change, like mid-year, or is this, it's just once a year?
Right. Correct.
I think unless there was some mistake made, and that's something I would have to check with the assessor. It's, I don't think it's happened in the years that I have been there, that they've adjusted that EAV, unless there's, you know-
Well, I mean, in terms of new building construction, if there's new building construction. So it wouldn't necessarily be a mistake. It would be that there was more growth than we had anticipated, and we'd be able to adjust.
I think that would probably then apply to next year's levy request, I think. And then it also is going to depend on what the CPI is, and I think it's 1.7 next year, so it's going down as well.
Okay. CPI is?
The consumer price index.
Oh, that's CPI, okay.
Yeah.
My other, since we seem to be talking about both budgets, I'll dive in to another question, which is, the, I looked at our expenses, and we're pretty lean and mean in terms of what we spend. I am wondering, though, whether or not some of our legal costs come from our legal presence at the township meetings, or is that, I mean, is it an hourly rate? Or is it that those legal costs are for any kind of legal issues that come up in the year? How does that work?
Correct. It's a fixed amount per month. It's $600 a month right now, and I'd have to go way back to when Mr. Grosser was hired, as how that figure was right. I think it's an estimate of number of hours spent a month on legal issues based on an hourly rate. So as far as whether that could be less or not, we would probably need to get information from Mr. Grosser on, you know, if we wanted to change to an hourly rate, how that might be affecting things.
Yeah, I would be interested, now that I know it's kind of a fixed rate, how many hours a month he does put in, and then what, at what rate, and, you know, are we close to what he had originally estimated?
Sure.
It would be useful to know.
Sure.
And I just think we need to look at where we need to make cuts, and I know that we don't have a lot of overhead, but we need to make cuts where we can. I'm very, I'm upset and disturbed by how much we will need to cut social services this year. I think it's really disappointing. And there are a lot of organizations in this community that rely on these funds. They don't get a lot of funding, period, and they don't get a lot of funding from us. I mean, usually it's $3,000 or $4,000, but it makes a huge difference in terms of them having a part-time staff person who can hold everything together. So I'm really concerned about organizations that know how to do a lot with a little, losing what little they do have.
Sure.
And so I think we have to look at alternatives as a council to see if there are ways in which we can help restore some of the social service funding.
Can I ask if the city budget, do you know what they're providing? Is it equal to last year's amount, or?
The inflationary increase.
Okay.
It's three or three and a half.
Okay.
Plus, remember, we had a small surplus that we've, oh, I think it was as a result of some of the grants not being used a few years ago, and then we tried to distribute that money over the course of several years, so that we would never see a drop in the social service pool, since we were seeing a drop from the CDBG funds as a result of the general interpretation of how we were using those, and mandating that our neighborhood cleanup, for instance, had to go into the social service pool, rather than in another category where we had considered in the past. So we do have a little bit of funds. I don't have that figure out in front of me.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the budgets? Either budget? All right. If there's no other questions or comments, and no other business to come before us, we're adjourned. We'll reconvene in five minutes as the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole.